Can we talk about Mike until he gets here, though?
No, we're streaming live. This has been recorded. It'll all be nice.
Yeah, you're on YouTube, so watch what you say. Um, all right, we're live.
All right. Welcome to the Southborough Zoning Board of Appeals for September 16th, 2020. I'm going to begin by reading a statement on the open meeting law. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law 38, Chapter 18, and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the zoning board of appeals will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the Town of Southborough's website at For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch or participate in the meeting may do so in the following manner: By finding the meeting at www.southboroughtown.com/remotemeetings. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on Southborough's website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. Okay. So, business before the board this evening does not allot. The first item on the agenda is approval of meeting minutes dated August 26, 2020. We did have five items that night. Katie has provided the meeting minutes for everyone's review. So, we can open the meeting for discussion of the minutes. Does anybody have any comments?
I just want to say, I thought that Katie did a really, really nice job summarizing a very difficult night, a long night with a lot of content. And the only thing I found was a typo on the top of page six. Just in the second line, the word "did" has two D's. Otherwise, I'm good with the minutes as they're written.
Okay.
Thank you.
Page six. Yeah, I thought there was, I'll be pressed to find it now, but I thought there was a minor typo in there that I should have already. I don't think it was anything significant, though. Did anybody else have any concerns with the meeting minutes?
I did not. I wasn't there, so. Doris, Jamie?
Good.
There is a lot there.
I don't have any comments on the meeting minutes.
Yeah, I would agree that Katie did a good job capturing it. There was, and I also wanted to thank Craig for turning over his first meeting, not as chairman, to one with five items on the agenda, especially two contentious items. Well done, Mr. Nicholson.
And I'm sorry that the Nicholson reign of easy meetings did not continue after my reign. So, but it looks like we're back on track now.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. One big whopper, and then we'll go back to. Okay, so Debbie, you noted a concern. Doris, you said you're fine with it? With them? Paul, you're okay with them? And Jamie, were you okay with them? You were in attendance as well?
Yes.
Okay.
What I can do is just do another review and look for typos. So, if there's a motion, just, you know, with any typo corrections, I can just go through that.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes with the, I guess, with the one edit that Debbie mentioned, and assuming everything else is fine.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second to approve the minutes as written. We'll do the roll call vote. All in favor, say aye. Debbie?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
And Paul?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. For, sitting for that, Katie, did we have, were Doris and Jamie both, or was Jamie, were you?
I was just an alternate.
Okay, you were an alternate.
Yeah.
But Doris, you were, yeah, you actually, yeah. So, I just, in terms of voting for the minutes.
Yeah, I think.
Craig, how that should.
Actually, I get to abstain.
Yes, yeah, you abstain. Do we record Jamie's vote? I don't, I didn't think so, yeah.
No, no, it's four yes and one abstain.
Yeah, okay.
No offense, Jamie.
No offense, Ed.
All right. So, the, then we, so we've voted to approve the minutes as written. You recorded the vote, Katie?
Got it, yep.
Okay, all right. All right, now, the next item on the agenda: Review of Proposed Updates to ZBA Applications. Do we have, is there something to present here, Katie? I'm actually unfamiliar with what we're trying to do here.
Sure, so I can share my screen for the first time and see if it works. So, basically, let me see what I can pull up here. Okay, oh, this is nice. Okay, so I'll just pull up one of the applications that I've. Let's see, all right, can everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay. Um. So, basically, what I've done is revamped just the instructions and the checklist that comes with a special permit application, a variance, or an appeal application. There are two things on the actual application that were requested to be removed that we can talk about after, but this isn't really anything official. It's what people get when they want to apply. That kind of gives them an overview of what we're looking for from them, what their responsibilities are, timeframes, and the burden of proof, which I think is probably one of the most important things on there. So, it hasn't been updated, most of them, since like '08. And I just, I saw a lot of people coming in confused, overwhelmed, wondering what they're supposed to do versus what the town or I do. So, I revamped it a little bit to, in this first page, you can see the top is what the applicant responsibilities are, and then the burden of proof that they have to kind of fulfill in order to get a, an approval of their request, and then the responsibilities that I would take over. A few other things that I put on there were a little bit of approximation of costs for things, because a lot of people were very surprised at how much sending the notice was, and the Metro West Daily News, which is kind of a hefty price tag. So, I have roughly or approximate in there for language, just to give them a heads up as to what's coming. And all of these, for all three applications, are the same, basically, except obviously the burden of proof. And I changed it up, you know, there's one typo that Debbie pointed out, which was great, but for all of them, they should look very similar. There's a whole copy paste thing that I love to do.
My only comment on this, because I do think it's nice that it's broken out in a little more clear, is that we might want to do a an attachment for the potential costs, rather than, you know, if the post office decides to update its rates, that we have to come back and vote on a new application. Since that's obviously not really a thing as much as just a helpful bit of information.
Yeah, that's, yeah, so Craig, that's just so we don't have to keep going back in and updating that.
Yeah, because if it, you know, went from $6.80 per letter to $9, or $6.90, then we'd have to come in and vote on a new application, which is just silly.
Or there may not be a post office, so there's that issue as well.
For that matter, there may not be a newspaper.
True.
You know, that seems generally dated.
Yeah.
Publishing.
Case in point, I recently had a public meeting in another location that got delayed a month because the newspaper actually misprinted the notice. And so, we had to wait a whole nother month.
Wow, that's crazy.
And just remind me, for those that know, that is that Mass General Law, that's why we can't post it like on the internet? It's got to be a newspaper? Okay.
Yeah, it's part of Mass General Law.
But now, 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 this, this form here, this is, as you're saying, Katie, this is strictly a form to use, it's more informational for the applicants, correct?
Correct, yes.
So, from what I understand, Katie and I were chatting, there's the, the form is staying, right? This is really just the set of instructions. Am I correct, Katie?
Yep, yeah, the biggest revamp that I've done is the application instructions only. And then, as I said in my email, there were two requests for a removal of two signatures on the actual application, which we can talk about now or after. I can pull those up, too.
I guess my question is, is this really a document that we vote on, or, because it, it still just seems instructional to the applicants?
I've been instructed to get a vote for it. And I do, I'd like to at least get your affirmation that this is, at least includes everything that you guys are looking for, because in the, in the end, this is what, what you guys will be needing.
Right.
But again, a lot of it, everything's still there. That was there prior. It might just be worded a little bit more customer-focused friendly, I guess, laypeople, you might say. And all the important things are there. Of the older document was a little bit redundant, a little wordy. And I've seen a lot of people just be intimidated, like I said.
So, this is, this is effectively a little bit streamlined, Katie, right? You've sort of laid it out very clearly for the applicant, and just to give them sort of a step-by-step in a cleaner presentation.
Right, yep, exactly. So, the key things that I've updated, so the price, which I will take off, I can always just inform them as they go. But the timeframes as well, I've put on there, so like, letting them know that the notice to a Butters is, you know, no less than two weeks, you know, prior that you send them out. We need the application the first business day of the month prior. And on the second page, another big thing that, this is mostly everything. I took out a lot of redundancy. But also, if you look at number three, the current plans, and like plot plan has to be no older than five years. We've run into that with a few people who are using things that were like 10 years and older. And we couldn't really find, me and the building commissioner, we worked together to look to find if there was anything written that says it can't be that old. And I know that for me, it was uncomfortable for us to let that go through, because a lot of things could have changed, and there was a lot of pushback. So, I felt like if we put it in here, it could be very plain and clear upfront that that's what's needed before.
I have a question along those lines, too. I have, I have one thing I want to bring up on G. But, you know, we've had some people come with sort of a hand-drawn sketch of what they would like to do. They want to modify their, their deck, or their, you know, make their, you know, garage into a room or something, and they take a photo, and they just modify it with their hand. And then, other people that paid to have, you know, somebody certified to come and do some drawings. So, do we give any kind of advice, you know, in terms of what the proposal needs to look like? Whether that needs to be sort of a certified drawing, or, I mean, are we expecting that a person would need to pay to have that done? Are we okay with like a hand-drawn, you know, this is kind of concept of what I'd like to do? Like, is that in here somewhere?
Katie, I don't, my experience in actually doing them is they, that's up to the building commissioner. I don't think they require like an engineer-surveyed, you know, plan. It can be hand-drawn. It needs to be, you know, relatively accurate, but maybe you can comment on what, what they're expecting in the building department.
Well, actually, it, it needs to be very accurate, because, you know, we're granting a variance or a relief based on an encroachment of, you know, like a setback is 12 feet instead of 15. And if that, if that's not done by someone who's certified to say, yes, it's actually 12 feet, and it ends up being 11, they're not approved for 11. You know, they thought it was 12. They didn't really know how to measure it. Turns out, it's 11. That's not approved. So, because we approved per the plan in front of us.
Right, but it's also, I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying it doesn't need to be accurate. It does. I'm, what I'm saying is, I'm not certain the requirement is you get, you know, an engineered drawing of what you're going to do. And that, again, it goes through the building department, so.
I think what Lori usually does in that case, if, there's been cases where it's, it is a deck or something like that, but she does require an as-built after, so a certified as-built, to ensure that all of those setback requirements and everything were met. And if they're not, she'll make them move them, so.
Okay, all right, yeah, I just, I think we're, in this case, we're following what the building department is requiring. I don't, I don't think we're establishing this for ourselves.
Yeah, and I, I still think that we would need, since we're granting legal relief against our bylaws, that we needed to be certified, stamped, architect, engineer, whatever the case might be. I mean, there's a reason that just a, you know, the plot plan you have with your deed doesn't count.
Yeah, and I think, Craig, you remember when we ran into that prior, and there was a lot of pushback, because it is expensive. But that is the expectation, because like you said, it is, it's legal. So, that's, I know that the building commissioner does, does require that as well, but when it comes to zoning.
Okay.
Are we talking about two separate things, though? Like, one is the, the plot plan, which has to be stamped by the Massachusetts Land Surveyor, et cetera, which I agree you need. But then, we also talking separately about someone who may just come in with a drawing and say, or a picture, and do their own little drawing, and say, this is where I want my deck? Because that, obviously, I don't think needs to be official, but they, but the actual, what are they calling it here? Oh, current plans? I guess. Current plans, does that mean like the plot?
That's more like the plot plan, I would say.
Maybe, maybe it's that wording is, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm still of the belief that if it's a drawing with measurements, that it needs to be done by someone who's certified to claim those measurements. Otherwise, I think we're, we're in a position, I mean, quite honestly, I think even, you know, if you remember when, drawn a blank on his last name, when he came in and had his own drawings, because he was an engineer and architect, but he's not able to stamp them. You know, we made him go back and have someone actually do it a little bit. Because, you know, it's, if it's wrong, because they don't know how to measure it properly, and they don't have the survey saying, this is the point on that line that you think is there. You know, it's just, we're opening it up to somebody down the road saying, the structure isn't legal, even though they, we said they could build it.
And I'll just add, we, we've had a couple of times where someone did the sort of drawing, and we, I, at least I struggled to calculate exactly what the encroachment was. And we all were coming up with slightly different numbers. And I wonder if that is a reason that the building inspector would reject the application? Because in this process, the applicant has to submit by the first of the month in order to have a hearing. But I think, you know, in that case, maybe the application's not really complete if we can't figure out with certainty what even the proposal is, you know?
Yeah, I think there are, there are times, and I've done this before, where you submit, but then you have new information, because something has been further refined. But it does need to be complete when you submit the first time. You can always add or replace a drawing, because you've, you know, figured something out, but the, as long as you're not changing the request itself. But it should be complete when you submit. Because otherwise, we get in the situation where we're hearing something that we can't actually decide. I think it's postponed, you know, pushed out, and everybody has to agree that it's pushed out, and the times get changed, and.
So, I mean, if that's, if that's what, you know, we, you know, Lori's expecting to get, then, I mean, I don't have a problem with it. It's definitely better for us to have that information. I would be curious what the pushback will be, Katie, because we certainly have not, it's not always been the case.
Hey, guys, just to chime in, I mean, the most complete is always best, especially if you're asking for relief on something. But it sometimes depends. Mike, Mike is somehow or another on the call, and just like, on the chat button there, if he wants us to have him chime in. So, I don't know how we get him to get in there also.
Hi, Mike, you're on mute.
Sorry, I had a late closing, so I couldn't, I couldn't jump off.
Hi, Mike.
Hello, nice to see you all.
Good to see you.
Good evening, Mike.
Good luck you to chime in on this one.
So, Mike, we're talking about Katie's update on the application, and the particular point Debbie brought up was the requirement for plans as appropriate, you know, to scale, signed and stamped by Massachusetts Registered Land Surveyor, Engineer, Architect, et cetera. And, and I think we've, we just discussed that. I think in the past, we've certainly looked at some things that were less than, you know, stamped by an engineer. And we're just talking about that, that requirement. Craig brought up a good point that, you know, if you can't really measure it accurately, do, are we actually giving appropriate relief?
Um, just, I'll speak from other towns. I know a lot of building commissioners will require at least a mortgage plot plan. They say that they require it, but what happens is you'll have, typically, it's seniors, and they'll come in with their handwritten drawings. Mortgage plot plan, so we order those every single day. We have a discounted rate. Those are about $175. Most people, most, will have that available to them from when they purchased. But, you know, there is going to definitely be a minority of the population that is not going to, they're not going to remember where it is. They're just never going to find it. Again, we're on some pretty soft ground as far as, you know, what I mean by that is, there's not going to be that many people that won't have the ability to obtain a plot plan. Um, I, I see the concern, because like, oh, we want relief, and here's this handwritten figure. Again, I'm always, can we get it right once the first time? And I know that that's frustrating to a lot of the residents. Oh, you need to, you know, I remember I was dealing with a, it was an addition on a property, and there was a recorded declaration of restricted covenants, and I had pulled up the chain of title. And I was like, well, we can approve and give this person a special permit, but I go, your HOA could tell you to tear it out, because that's what it says. And remember, the applicant was kind of annoyed with me. I'm like, you know, you know, I'm just trying to protect you kind of from yourself to a degree. I think if we could just, I think a certified mortgage plot plan, I don't think the cost is really prohibitive. To some people, it's, again, another burden. I, I, I see that as a regular requirement. It's not an instrument survey, but, you know, they're pretty close. Katie, you're going to be more on the front lines with this than anyone. What do you see?
So, I do see a little of everything. I do have, I'm texting Lori right now. For most zoning issues, I've seen her ask for that upfront, and if not, an as-built after. And she, you know, she's saying, for these issues, a lot of people do need them. I'm just asking for a little clarification, but I was under the impression that it's needed most often prior, so you guys have something accurate to look at, and then.
I mean, just, just, just to jump in, just on one of our last cases with, if, let's say that swimming pool had come before us, well, where's the pool? Oh, we think it's here. I mean, they're only needing a few feet of relief, but, you know, I don't think it's an unreasonable burden.
I'm also thinking back to the last meeting, Mike, and I know the, you know, the garage, that was, that was clearly not an engineered.
Yeah, exactly.
Most definitely not, so. Yeah, it is more, a little bit more what, you know, Katie and Lori are going to be dealing with coming in. If we could have it that way, I would certainly welcome it.
And Katie, I don't know if Lori is watching, let's just say a client comes in and needs a plot plan. Just like, I won't, I don't make a dollar off of it. It's just what I get, I get charged $175 for my engineer. You know, I probably order at least 10 a week, so, you know, if someone needed a plot plan and didn't have a record, just like, and again, I don't make a penny. It's nothing, just me trying to be of our courtesy to a resident, nothing more.
So, I wonder if the, the difference is kind of the, you know, the, the proof that we need, I mean, I think on a variance where we're actually granting relief against a zoning bylaw, the threshold might be more stringent versus a special permit, which is allowed, given, you know, conditions and appropriateness. You know, so it might just be that the instructions on the variance versus the special permit might be slightly different.
Yeah, so, I'm texting with Lori. She, so I think for zoning, she does require it. She's saying that for any plans that have over 10 feet or more from a required setback, she doesn't require it, because there's enough buffer. But if it's, if it's within 10 feet of a setback, she requires either a certified plot plan prior or an as-built after.
So, are we, are we okay with, we set the, the bar here in the application submissions checklist as this is what you need to provide? And again, because it's in front of Lori, does she sort of accept the ones that aren't that way? Because you're more than 10 feet from a, from a setback? I mean, I, I guess I want to just keep in mind here that we're, this is, this is a checklist. I mean, this is what we're asking applicants to provide, but there, there is the human element here when the applicants are in the building department.
Yeah, yeah, so she just confirmed that any zoning issue does require one. She requires one for, I think, what Craig was describing, the accuracy measurement. But if, if you guys aren't comfortable with that language, I, I mean, that was on the older one. All I added was no older than five years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, we can take that off if, if you think something older would suffice. I just know that we've come into issues where, you know, people have said things that, you know, oh, no, it hasn't been updated since then, and it's just easier to have something nice and clean to look at, depending on the scope, so it's whatever.
Yeah, that's, and that's, that's kind of the concern, depending on the scope. Are they doing something really significant? You clearly need something as accurate and up to. You, you, you clearly need something as accurate and up to date as possible. Yeah, I'm just, I don't know.
I think when you're talking about a set of expectations as to what everyone has to deliver for it to be a valid application, I don't think you get to, you know, an encroachment on a setback is an encroachment on a setback. Whether it's an inch or, I mean, it wouldn't be an inch, but like whether it's a foot or five feet, that's not the material point, it's that it's an encroachment.
Right.
And whether you're doing it for, you know, a deck or a three-story addition, again, that's not the issue, it's the fact that you're in the setback.
Yeah, I'm more inclined to have a consistent set of rules, expectations. You know, we can't have plot plans, you know, a certified plot plan from their purchase 15 years ago.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with the, the five-year statement as well.
Yeah.
Okay. So Debbie, does that, you started with that question, right?
Yeah, I'll go with what everybody's thinking. Um, I mean, I, I think we should try to make it easy for Lori. If we think that, you know, that there's a requirement there, we should put it here. Obviously, if somebody has a hardship, that's, I guess, for the office to deal with, right?
Right.
But I just, yeah, I'm kind of at the same thinking that if we're, you know, if we're granting relief, we, we should be exact, and I just know that there's been some meetings where even going back as far as Andrew and probably even before, where we're looking and trying to do some quick calculations to try to figure out ourselves what, what the setback is because it wasn't, you know, exactly precise, so. And so that's my question is, do we, is it up for us to put this on this kind of a set of checklist to say, you know, if you have a proposal, you need to clearly state, you know, with certainty how much into the setback you're going to be? Or do we leave that to the, up to Lori in the zoning department? Where are we with this? So we, so we are leaving it to Lori and not?
I, I, I think we're, where we are is we, we're saying we, we agree with the statement and if, yeah, I, I got, I mean, I guess.
I just have.
Lori has some wiggle room.
I just have one comment on, you know, I agree with the being current, it's how can you be accurate? Five years seems reasonable, but there's always a reason someone's not going to think five years is reasonable. I have a small problem with the word appropriate because it makes you think about it more. Do we need the word, it's just generally, you know, do we need that word appropriate? I mean, it, it gives a list of what we at least need and then.
So would you just strike the as-appropriate?
I just thought, yeah, I'm leaning towards striking as-appropriate because it doesn't, it removes the question. It sounds like it's a question that we don't have an answer to.
Yeah, actually, I was, I was reading as-appropriate in the sense that, I mean, a current set of plans for a building, you're gonna have civil plans, you're gonna have foundation plans, you're gonna have framing detail, like, we don't necessarily need all of the plans, we just need the appropriate pieces of the plan based on what you want to do.
Yeah, I see your point, Greg. But just the plans, you're just, you know, so the plans could be, it's whatever they're doing in the application.
Trying to accomplish is, I think, the concept.
Right.
I kind of agree right here. If it's not, if it's not necessary to us that we don't need.
Right.
We don't want to give the, the, the misinterpretation that we need a full set of building plans for, for, for this. We, we don't need a framing plan, we don't need a electrical plan, we just need what is appropriate for us to make this determination.
So, but it's saying also that at least, so it's giving guidance, at least if they put in the kitchen sink, but at least is, if the list is pretty clear.
Yeah, and if it's, if it's not sufficient, we are, we do have the, the, the right to say we can't act on this because we don't have enough, there's not enough information. We don't, it's not, there's not enough being presented here.
So if I, if I were a layperson sitting in the appropriate, I might, a detailed person might throw in every possible plan that we wouldn't need. And another person would just do the bare minimum. So they may find that burdensome and costly, that's.
Yeah, they may.
I've, I've seen it go both ways. I've seen things be very simple and I've seen things be very detailed, so it just depends, I guess.
I, I was thinking, you know, there's as-appropriate popped up in number five. I, I think everybody's giving us photographs, but occasionally we get an application that maybe doesn't have a photograph, has a sketch. But can we, on number five, strike as-appropriate? That one's asking for current photographs of the property.
I would agree. I think we have a formatting issue on those as well, they're not very.
They need to be out-dented, yeah. Right there.
Well, I think that's a good point, Debbie. I mean, getting a photograph now is, is not what it once was. Everybody can take a picture with their, with their phone and dump it somewhere, so that's easy enough to do.
Yeah, I, I just want to bring up also, and I've been looking at this, I don't want to make a lot out of this, but I'm trying to figure out the post-application checklist and whether this is an appropriate comment, but on G, I, I propose that we change, instead of after board approval of an appeal, something like if an appeal is granted.
Upon, upon granting of the.
Upon granting.
Upon, upon board.
Board approval, yeah.
Of an appeal. Yeah, that makes sense.
Thank you. I know it's.
Let's read the whole thing, though.
No, but it sets an expectation.
Yeah, no, actually.
Right, right.
Actually, it is after board approval of, until it has been certified by the town clerk.
Yeah, that's true. That's true, so there's more to it, yes.
Our approval, it's about being certified. Because it's after that occurs, they have to go and record it with the registry.
I came up with, you could say subsequent to board approval.
Again, it's not, it has nothing to do with.
But it's. Yeah, it's about the town clerk.
Okay.
Which is just then taking our, our decision, going to the clerk, having the clerk stamp it, sign it and do what he needs to do. They then take that stamp-signed decision and go to the registry of deeds.
Well, maybe flip the sentence. Would you flip the sentence then?
The applicant.
I, I don't think so.
The applicant must. The sentence, yeah, the sentence, it's just a structure, the sentence.
Now that I'm looking at this, and this is a copy and paste mistake, I believe, so we're looking, oh, no, wait, are we looking at G, a special permit? So I think that should say special permit, or am I now?
I think they all sort of read like that, though, after board approval of X.
Right, so I think I copied this from the appeal application. And I have, I think it's supposed to say special permits, all of this is regarding a special permit, and then the appeal is different, so I think that's my, like, type.
I was reading it as presumptive that you're gonna get an approval.
Yeah.
I see it's really more instructions after the town clerk provides the certification, which assumes you've gotten the board approval, so it's just an awkward sentence, I think.
What if, I had an idea, but now I lost it. The applicant must have this approval recorded at the registry, registry of deeds upon board approval of the special.
But it, I think the important piece there is the town clerk has to certify.
Oh, right, right.
Yeah, because I mean, F is about the appeal period that you have to sit with before you can take it to the town clerk. So if I'm reading these in order, it's like, okay, you gotta wait for your 20-day appeal period, then you can take it to the clerk for certification. After you take it to the clerk for certification, then you go and record it at the registry of deeds.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think you can restructure that sentence. I think that has to flow that way.
I, I, I don't think you can look at it just at, let's look at G by itself, you have to kind of understand that it's subsequent to F.
How about after, so, so G is after the appeal period, you could say after the appeal period. Am I understanding that right?
Or you mean to say after the board approval and appeal period and, and, and?
Why, I guess, I guess the question is, why do you need board approval there? If you're already talking about the 20 days.
After the certification of the decision by the town clerk.
I don't know if you even need the board approval, so after the appeal period has been certified by the town clerk.
Actually, I think it's just after the certification of the decision by the town clerk.
Okay.
Yeah, which you can use in all, all of the.
Strike and strike after the redundancy, just strike it.
Right.
Oh, after certification of the, of the decision by the town clerk. That would work.
A board's decision, the board's approval decision.
Do we just call, I mean, what do we call it? Let's make sure we just call it the same thing that we do earlier. I mean, when we write it up, it's a decision.
Right, yep, it is a decision.
So it's, you know, yeah, it starts on the decision.
After a decision has been, been certified by the town clerk.
Yeah.
That's basically it, yeah.
Yeah, that sounds good.
I like that.
All right.
That change that throughout?
Yeah.
Yeah, because then we don't have to change it, appeal and special permit, it's just the decision.
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
Okay.
And that's it, this is like an extra page.
Okay, so you make the changes that we talked about, Katie, and then we'll, we can, we can review again? Okay.
And the, the only other one was on the application.
Katie, I just wanted to suggest, and you may end up doing this, but where you had the fees, I know we talked about doing an attachment, so you could just easily plug things in if they change.
Yep.
So, so up where you have it written down, you, you could just say, see attachment.
Okay.
Or some, you know, something. See, see fee schedule attachment, or however you want to word it. And that way you can just update that detachment as needed.
And the only other change was, the first one was requested by the town clerk on the actual application itself. So these are the old ones. He asked that section 18 here, where he needs to sign it, be removed because they stamp it there, they review the whole thing and their stamp acts pretty much as their signature. So he felt that that was redundant and thought that we.
Can you show your screen? Are you able to show that?
Are you guys, oh, I thought it was, are you guys seeing it? Anybody?
No, we're still on the special.
No, we're still seeing the special permit.
Craig, if I change documents, do I have to share again?
Then, if you shared a window or if you shared a specific document.
Okay. Got it.
So, so the signature line where it says town clerk's signature is removed, but we still need the filing date, right?
The filing date is part of their stamp.
They changed the date on this, the stamp changes dates?
Yes.
Okay.
Let's just say that one more time, Katie, so it's, it's, it's 18, so they, they stamp it, so there's not, there's not a wet signature, right?
Right, yep, they stamp it and then there's a date in that.
And the same with 17?
So the building commissioner also asked, she felt that, that, that was redundant too, because she supplies the denial letter that has her opinion in it along with the reasoning for going to the zoning board. This one's a little bit, it's, it's tricky because we're down in the, in the basement of the senior center, so people come, they get it signed by Lori, they go up to the town, town hall and then come back to us all on the same day. It's, it's fun to watch, but I'm sure it's a pain for, for all the applicants. So it's up to you guys, she felt like her opinion letter might, might suffice for, instead of a signature, seeing as she reviewed it prior and gave an opinion on it.
And that's, and that's always, that's part of the package anyway. It does seem redundant to me, I agree.
Is there any way that, like, there's, they can game any, any system, but, but, but by removing it, I just don't want to have, create an opportunity for someone to like not have to submit something or get something rechecked, that's all.
But that's a building department requirement, right?
Right, but I'm just saying, like.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. I gave one to Lori, went to the town clerk, kind of gave them the same, and then that's what we got. I don't know, I just, I just want to make sure we're not. I'm fine with removing it, but if, if that's what Lori and Katie think, but I just want to make sure that I'm not missing any piece of the puzzle, that's all.
Yeah, I'm just trying, I'm trying to think of that as well. Is there any ever, or like all the letters from Lori, and is there any chance that it would be reviewed by somebody else? You know, it, could, could we have a discrepancy in that it was reviewed by person A, but Lori wrote the letter?
That's right, that's what I'm getting at, Mike.
No, I mean, there's a, she's the most qualified to do it, so anybody who would receive one of these would bring it to her.
Okay, so it is.
Yeah, I mean, if your guys' internal policies is that she is the person that does every pre-filing review in the building department, then that's not a, an issue.
Yep.
If we ever grow to the point that we have more than one person doing them, then we need to add that back in.
Yeah, I, because the reason that I initially thought of, I thought of Westboro, more people and like, I, I, my memory is that there's been some games about like, here's Form A that we give to this person and then we swap out, you know, just a little bit of game. As long as it's just Lori, I just don't think it'll happen.
Yeah.
I just want to ask, because Lori has a backup now, I think, um, you know, does that make any difference? Is, is it necessary to know? I don't know if the backup person has worked, if it's just coverage, just in case. But am I, I'm correct about that, right? I thought I had seen the selectman voted for somebody for backup.
Yeah, yeah, she's been there for years.
So does it matter who signs it, or will you still like to stamp it, that the building department stamped it?
I know that when it comes in, so this is now, I look at it and Lori looks at it, so Julianne doesn't.
Oh, Julianne's the backup? Oh, I didn't realize.
Oh, I'm sorry, you mean the backup building inspector?
Yes, I thought, I, I thought the selectman agreed to a backup building inspector, right?
Yes, he's not doing any zoning issues, that, I, I think that was part of his contract, that he, he just is doing inspections. He didn't actually even review permit applications for building permits, so.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, are we good with that then?
Good.
Yeah, I mean, we can all, if, if it ever becomes something that we think there's potential for, you know, inconsistency, we can add some.
Bring it back, yeah. Okay.
All right, so what I can do is take these changes and revamp it for next time and hopefully or we can review it again. I can even send it out earlier than, say, two weeks out from the meeting, and if anyone has more feedback, I can just make note of that and, and update it maybe in red, so everyone can see.
Yeah, please do, that would, that would definitely be helpful.
Okay.
Okay.
Guys.
Thanks, Katie.
I had just one more question if I, if I can. So seeing that there's not going to be a fall town meeting, we had the one bylaw update that Katie's been working on, it was going to be presented, I think, in the fall. I can't remember which one it is now, it's been so long, Katie, the one that you were working on with the planning board?
Yeah, the 174, nine E or nineteen. Yeah, non-conforming.
Non-conforming, right, and I'm just wondering, I'm not sure what the process is to get it onto the spring into the warrant, but, you know, since we have some time, I was wondering if there are any other bylaws that need to be updated. I mean, I'm thinking there's the way that, you know, if we end up doing a spring meeting and it's outside again. I mean, I'm thinking there's the way that, you know, if we end up doing a spring meeting and it's outside again, um, you know, it might be bundled, and so maybe if, if, um, the building inspector has some that are difficult and tricky, we can ask her. And, and it, you know, might be something that we, we'd be willing to, you know, take a crack at and put it through, or try to get it through town meeting with, with the other one, so I just wanted to see if that's something. Um, and I've talked to Katie about this, and I don't know if you've had the chance to ask Lori, or if you know, are there ones in the building department that are, you know, that really need to kind of be updated?
Like, everybody in the entire town asked for it to be waived?
Yeah, which one is that?
Yep, I know that, um, Lori has a lot of issues with a lot of it, just the small wording, right, that can be interpreted many different ways, and um, I know she has a list, and I think we're going through to prioritize it and see if anybody's willing to entertain maybe another change at town meeting.
Yeah, I did want to offer that I'd, I'd be happy to help, because I, I think a lot of this is in the wording, as you know, I've gotten tripped up on the wording. And, um, we all think that some of this stuff can be better um, worded at times, and it's just, you know, I'm not saying that we have a lot of time, because I don't know when the warrant would be due, but you know, if there are some that we can get through and kind of bundle them together for town meeting, I think it kind of makes some sense to me.
Agreed.
Yeah, so maybe at the next meeting, Katie can, uh, bring Lori's list.
Oh, but it's not too long.
Yeah, as long as it's, uh, reasonable.
Yeah, you asked. That.
I, yeah, I, I, I think so, so you'll, you'll, you'll make some edits, and we'll come back and review this at the, at our next, um, meeting. And we'll also consider what, what Debbie just brought up. So, um, with respect to the next meeting, then, Katie, um, your, I think we, we put on the agenda for it to be October twenty-one, and you, you don't have anything currently. Do you?
No, there's something that just came through, um, that it's a rebuild, somebody needs, I think it's setback, uh, we don't have the full plans yet. Um, if we did, if they came in within a week, I could probably get them on October twenty-first, if you guys, um, approve of that. I know it's later than the expectant date for submitting an, an application. Um, so it's up to you if, if you want to add them, or they can wait until November, once we get the actual plans from them. And applications.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't know how everybody else feels. I, I'd be open to either, either way. In October, or we're waiting till November is okay as well.
Okay. Yeah, I would say I'm okay hearing it if they have the application completed and we can notice it.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
You know, I, if they are still missing things and, and the deadline for us to notice it, then, no, they gotta, they gotta wait. Would be my view.
Yeah.
Not like we have a full agenda, that we have to like, you know, parse things out and make sure we're not overloaded.
I don't think we're, I don't think we're too overloaded.
I'll, I'll let them know.
Okay.
You missed a, you missed a full, full docket last time.
I, I chimed in for a little bit, because I had some, uh, some delay before my, my actual item was called. Um, so I, I did, I did hear a little bit, I did not hear the decision on the the garage thing on Brighton or whatever it was.
Oh, right, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I listened to that for a little while.
Yeah, the garage, they withdrew.
Hmm. That was the only, it was, it was a good way to go.
Yeah.
Without prejudice?
Right.
Yeah, so then come back and fix it.
Yep.
So, so then, uh, the next, so October twenty-first is, is, is questionable right now, depending on, uh, the, the status of the application, so if it comes in in time and we have what we need, uh, I think, I think we're all willing to do that, otherwise I don't think there'd be a reason to have a meeting until November. Agreed?
Yep.
Okay. Okay. I think this is you, Paul.
Oh. Okay, uh, make a motion to adjourn. I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn and a second. Uh, all in favor, say aye. Uh, Debbie?
Yes, aye.
Uh, Doris?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Paul?
For sure, aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Craig?
Yes.
And aye for me as well. Alright. That closes the meeting. Thanks very much, everybody.
Katie, thanks again for your help on this thing with the barn, and thank Lori. Thank you.
Okay. Alright, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Bye, guys.
Hope to see you soon.